We'll wait a few minutes, everybody.
I think we're good. Commissioner Beatty cannot make it.
Okay, Commissioner Beatty is not able to make it this morning, so. Mr. Manager, I'll hand it over to you.
All right, thank you, Chairman. We have, this will be the agenda review for next Wednesday, March 1st's meeting, and we'll start off with Nicole on county business.
Good morning, sir and commissioners. We will talk about severe weather awareness week that starts March 1st. I will discuss or have someone from emergency management come in to talk about their programs that they do throughout the month of March. Next, World Hearing Day is on March 3rd, and then I'm going to do a final reminder for the Thunderbolt Ribbon Cutting on March 4th, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
We have then, we have a couple of appointments to start the meeting. One's an Airport Advisory Board appointment from Commissioner Dennis's district. Item B is a solid waste management appointment recommended by Susan Earl and mine, and there's a board appointment. Then we get into new business, and I've got Scott here today to talk about item C. I don't think he had a chance to brief you this week, so we'll just take care of it now, so you can be prepared on what's coming in, so.
Morning, Scott.
Good morning.
I wondered why you were here.
Always an adventure.
There you go, alright.
Well, it's glad to see you all. I'm glad to see you all. This case, I'm going to go ahead and give you the overview. I do want to apologize that I wasn't able to get those briefing scheduled ahead of today. However, I know that working with Carol, it's my understanding that she just sent out some meeting invites. So if you feel like you've got sufficient information after today, we can cancel those. However, if you'd like to continue with those, we could certainly do that as well. Let me make sure you get the information.
Okay, thank you.
So, this one is a conditional use request. It's for a cell tower. It's near the city of Derby. And in this case, the city of Derby has indicated the planning recommended denial, and you've got a letter that I've distributed showing that, as well as there have been protests against the applications, and the amount of protests has exceeded the threshold set by the state and zoning code. Terms of the, the request, again, is for a conditional use. It's for a 195-foot monopole tower on the site, and you can see the site.
Scott, one second.
Oh, yes, sir.
Can you go back one step? I'm sorry. We do have a letter that the city of Derby sent to us, but it says the meeting minutes were attached, and they're not attached, though. I don't know why they denied them.
Oh, sir, it's in the packet. I'm sorry. In our agenda packet, we've included the minutes, but we didn't include this letter as well.
We have the agenda packet.
Do we have the minutes?
You're talking about the art agenda.
And I, yes, sir, in your, your agenda.
Our agenda, okay, alright. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, sure, and I can provide an overview about why, what statements they made. So the way that the Derby Planning Commission considers these, they will go through and review the golden factors. They will receive a presentation, they will appear in the application, and then it will be public input. Before the planning commission, when they bring it back, they go back through the golden factors. And as they considered those, there were two that were in support of the denial in terms of factors. And that was the extent to which removal of the restrictions would detrimentally affect nearby property. One member of their planning commission expressed that the tower would negatively affect property values and make acquiring loan on the property more difficult. As well, in terms, there was a golden factor for opposition or presence. There were several members of the public at that meeting who spoke in opposition. General concerns about, similar concerns that have been expressed as at the MAPC. Including concerns over impact of 5G wireless signals, impacts to aircraft, the height of the tower and proximity to the McConnell Air Force. So, other than those, those were the ones that they cited. There were not any others.
Well, it's, it's in the airport. It's blocked off.
And McConnell does have a, a zone around its parameter. That's the question.
No, this is not in that area, and I'm looking back to staff to confirm that.
They used that as a reason to deny it.
It was brought up by.
Okay, yeah, but that's a great point. Good question, yeah.
I, I thought, yeah, I've had some of the opponents contact me, and as they talk to me, they're also concerned about the, the smaller aircraft out of Cook Airfield, which is much closer. It's only basically two miles to the east, maybe, maybe not even quite that far. I have to look at my map and see the distance, but there's ultra lights, there's a smaller craft that to fly out of Cook, and they're low altitude. So, and again, I'm not sure this is going to be a lighted tower. I don't, it's a beacon on the top of this thing, but it's 200 feet tall, so. You know, it's pretty, pretty high up there, and, yeah. I'm not sure about the McConnell having a concern, because airplanes fly quite a bit higher, but Cook, maybe a bigger, maybe, maybe a bigger issue. Go ahead.
Yeah, the condition, this application requires a conditional use because outside of the area where an administrative approval can be provided for a tower. Also, because the site is currently zone rural residential, and it, which limits the height of the tower to 120 feet, and again, they are applying for 195. If approved, the applicant would need to comply with solid screening requirements for the unified zoning code, so they have to put a solid fence. And please note also that the state of Kansas prohibits consideration of 18 factors when considering an application for a communication structure. Five of those factors, most relevant ones, are included in the staff report. Terms of the property, you can see its location here just south of 71st Street. It's approximately three quarters of a mile west of Greenwich Road. And it's within the Derby urban area of influence and Derby area subdivision authority. The character of the surrounding properties, you can see from the serial, that some of them are developed with large lot residential, as well as some are still in agricultural use or vacant. Zone showing rural residential surrounding it, there is. Terms of review, the planning commission considered it on January 19th at the public hearing and recommended approval of the request unanimously 12 to 0. Several members of the public spoke in opposition with general concerns over impact on property values, detrimental visual impacts, health concerns, and the construction of the tower in flood plain. And you'll note, see where the site is relative to a creek in the area. I said in just a moment, January, January, the city of Derby Planning Commission considered the application and. Recommendations for denial. Advisory Board for District 5 doesn't consider planning applications. Several protests were filed against this application. They told 46.23% of the protest area, which obviously exceeds the 20% threshold. Therefore, a super majority required in order to approve, four out of five votes. Recommendation coming to you from the planning commission is for approval. Again, requires four out of five votes. Alternatives include overriding the MAPC recommendation, which requires four out of five votes as well, and denying the case. Or as always, you can return it to the MAPC. Take it through the rest of. Going that it's in both areas for Derby. Fight plan for it. In terms of being in the flood plain, you can see that there's a large concrete foundation. It's my understanding that would go down to bedrock. Also, that they've got a platform that they would put the equipment on, which would rise and keep it out of the water. Showing that it was above the 20%. Four and six.
Back to flood plain, I thought you weren't allowed to build anything in a flood plain.
Um, I do not have the specifics on that. Would it require permitting through MABC? Required for plating through the Derby subdivision regulations. That's something I can report on. I can follow up actually with the emails.
One other thing on this protest, protest map, can we, can I see a map of where the residences are relevant to this tower? I mean, I don't, by looking at this, I can't tell where the residences are. The two, the two large pieces of property there that did not protest. I, this, off the memory, I'm trying to think of where the houses are, and I'm not actually really sure. And the ones that are in the red, I, I know there are some homes in those areas, and so that would be really helpful to have a. Oh, is it show, okay.
Very last page.
So the best I can do at this point is the aerial image, but what we can do is follow up with an additional map.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
And if, I needed to ask one more thing, but can you put some distances on for the houses to the tower?
Sure.
That'd be great, thank you.
Put some rings on there, show.
Alright, that'd be great. Thank you again.
Okay, thanks, and thanks for the pictures and the presentation. Any other questions? Commissioner Lopez, you got any questions?
I don't know. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
Also, if you could, between now and next Wednesday, catch Commissioner Beatty, maybe give him a brief update. Okay, that brings us to item D. Tanya will be on hand Wednesday to give you. An update on federal platform. If the commission is satisfied on Wednesday, we'd like you to vote and accept it. If you have further workforce, please instruct at that time, but she will be at the podium. She is out today, I might add. She's in Oklahoma to training, so. We will bring back the quarterly financial report, which we deferred from last week. We'll, we'll give that overview, and then, of course, boards of bids and contracts. On the consent list, item G is a, Lindsay's behind me or not, we're doing some roadwork out at 375th and 391st. And there's one of those big old blue water lines in the way of that, so we need an agreement with the city of Wichita as we go through with that construction. Item H is, and Tim is here and can speak to this if you have questions, but there's a K Dad's only contracts with one. Agency in the state of the 11, and that is the Northwest Kansas Area Agency on Aging. And we are actually a sub recipient of that, so that's, this, the agreement is item H.
That's a very, that's a very long acronym.
It is.
The N W K A A A.
Anything else, Tim, on that?
It's, we've been doing, this arrangement's been in place since we.
Okay.
Item I is our annual renewal agreement with Child Advocacy Center. That's 205,000 that the commission for the last several years has funded, CAC.
And. It matches.
I don't know that, Commissioner. I'll, I'll have, I'll check on that between now and next Wednesday.
They do. I'm not sure of the level. I know. Follow up and get the level.
Okay. Item J is a little bit of a. Grade change for position in health. Adrian sent you all an email this morning. They had an interpreter that resigned. And so she is going to, she's upgrading a position, and we can aspire to hire a Spanish-speaking. Yeah. Item K. Is. A request to, this is part of our migration organizationally to get IT functionality consolidated under IT. So they're, we're moving a position from DOC, from Corrections Department, into Mike's shop to further centralize IT operations. That's what item K is representing.
It's not a correctional position, it's an. Not losing it.
No.
We're already short of corrections.
Was a, this was an administrative position in corrections. It was a lower pay grade, and it was providing IT support. But corrections couldn't keep it filled because it was under, it was undergraded and underpaid. And Mr. Elpers wanted to pull that position into his shop because it was providing. IT functionality supports. He should own the position, so he's pulling it into his shop and, and utilize it to support corrections, but then to do other work as well. So that's what it is.
Book corrections position.
No, no. Yeah, Steve, Steve and Chris Morales are supportive of this, of this action, moving this position from their shop to, to Mike.
Is the source of funding the same for these two positions? Source of funding, is it the same?
Yes, I believe we're not changing funding on it. Yes.
Funding's not.
The source is the same.
It's.
Grant, I mean, grant funds or property tax funds, is it?
I believe this is a general fund position that corrections is funded for. Corrections, it's kind of like the MABCD arrangement where MABCD pays for a IT architect, but that position is in Mike's shop. And this is the same thing. Corrections will pay for this position out of funding that they already have. But Mr. Elpers will own it and control it and use it for their support, but then for other IT functions as well.
So anyway, it is a higher paid position, though.
Yes.
There'd be some fiscal impact to that choice.
That was approved through the budget cycle last year.
Alright.
For this, for this fiscal year. That was all taken care of in the budget.
If you read the backup material, whenever we make a move like this, it gives better redundancy to that department. So then, whereas they have one person that can do it now, Mike has a stable of people that can provide assistance for them. So these, I always view these organizational upgrades when we get a centralization process like that, so. Anything else, Rusty?
No, sir.
Okay, that was K. Then, item. L and M are finance policies. One is a repeal. That is, item L is a 1990 policy on paper procurement, and the world changed radically there, so we're appealing that particular policy. Item N is a, is an adoption of a policy, an amendment of a policy concerning budget transfer policy. And I think Lindsay's headed here, but if she's not here yet, if there's questions on that, we can come back to it.
Well, and I'm here on Zoom, Tom, if you need anything.
Oh, very, very good. So she's on Zoom, okay. Item N is personnel policies that you've all been briefed about one-on-one. This employment policy, point 4.300, and drug testing policy, 4.310. Item, oh, I understand you've also been briefed on risk management policies and procedures. Item P, we're pulling, we're going to defer that for one week. I need a little work on that myself, so we'll have that on the agenda for next, for the March 8th meeting. It will not be on for next week. And then Lindsay, on item Q, that's the rainy day reserve policy. Do you want to talk about opioid spending on that, or?
Sure. So Commissioners, Dr. Stedman was able to get a quote that expires in mid-March for the machine that she spoke with you about during your opioid briefing. A couple of weeks ago, and so what, the situation with opioid funding is that until the legislature authorizes the creation of a statute. Or I'm sorry, of a. New fund for opioid settlement money, you all don't have the ability to establish that fund. And so, once that is on the books, and we can create a new fund, we'll still have to bring that to you for resolution. You'll have to authorize some budget authority, and so there will be a bit of time between when the legislature actually approves it and when we can actually implement the use of that fund. But because we do have a relatively time-sensitive quote, we wanted to go ahead and proceed with that. So this item that you're looking at here would basically take the opioid funding that's already sitting in the general fund. And we would use that to, to support a transfer of budget authority from the rainy day reserve, which can only be used in very specific situations. And we would move that to the Regional Forensic Science Center, and up on bid board, there is an item to actually make the purchase. And so this would be the budget authority transfer to actually support that purchase. Then we will have a decision to make down the road about whether we leave that expense and that portion of opioid funding in the general fund. Or if you will allow us to, and we can figure out logistically how to make it happen. What we would like to do is actually move the, the order that we put in and all of the opioid funds into that new fund. And so this is just step one, but again, it's a little bit time-sensitive because of the timing on that quote. And we felt like there was solid consensus from the commission to move forward with that as a use of the approximately 1.1, I believe, million in opioid funds that we have already received.
And that number that is approximately what? Is it still 300 or something like that? 300,000? 350?
Yes, the, and it should be in the backup. I believe it's about 375, if I recall correctly. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but the, the precise amount of that quote, the precise amount of budget authority that we are asking you to move in this item.
Okay, and I recall that. We didn't, when she presented, it sounded like there's maybe, those are hard machines to get and sometimes backordered and things like that, so. If, is that, is that where your recollections are as well?
Yeah, clarify that this is the machine that Dr. Stedman was asking for.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
This is the exact machine, but we are not asking her to purchase used or to purchase refurbished. We can get a, a better bang for our buck buying new and extending the life of that machine, so we're actually moving forward with her.
Okay. Any other questions?
The only, the only other thing on, while we're talking about opioid money here loosely, the sheriff has a request or two that he wants to bring forward that has to do with some. Activities within schools, and so time is a little bit of the essence. We can get to end of year, and I'll be giving you more information on that as well in the next. But he wants some type of movement on that, hopefully in a meeting in the month of March, so we'll be getting you briefed on that further. The rest of the general agenda is routine business. There is a fire agenda, but it is basically a replication of the policy changes that we saw under consent of the general agenda. I will, I'm asking Rusty to bring, and for Chief Williams to come in, just to give us an update on the advisory board status. We'll be doing that on Wednesday, too, at some point during the fire agenda, either under other, whenever the commission wants to discuss it, so.
And we will have a executive session that day?
Yes, Mike, correct. Couple of items.
Okay, alright. And, and that is all, any other questions?
That's all I had for agenda review. If you'll, there's a lot of legislative action right now, so I've got Jason kind of on standby. Have him call in here. I know Commissioner Dennis had some specific questions. Yeah, man, here. Is, is the volume going to be max on that, or? Might hang on till he calls in. And it's my understanding that Jason's squeezing us in here this morning, so if we could be brief with questions and get an update, I think that he's got some schedule things happening. And I had told him around 10:30, so it's 10:24, so we'll, hopefully, I just hit him with the text, so. Uh, Jason, are you there?
Hey, it's Jessica on the news.
Got them both.
Hi, Jason.
Alright, very good.
Good morning, Jason and Jessica. Thank you for joining us on this impromptu request.
Jason, can you just give us a quick overview? I had sent you a few items that Commissioner Dennis had questions on. Can you give us just a quick brief on where those are at? Nicole?
Okay. Tax bill, tempting entertainment businesses, that. That's more, that's entertainment businesses, restaurants, health clubs, et cetera. You know, obviously, that's, that's problematic. I, I unders, I think we all understand what they're trying to address. But it's really taking a shotgun approach and, and puts frankly county government right in the middle. Of an issue that they don't have anything to do with, so. You know, I think that's what we have to continue to communicate on this. Again, it's, it's a very problematic bill that if it went into statutes, I think could have disastrous results. You know, we're, we're in an open meeting, and I'm, in, in open meetings, I'm a little more cautious about discussing everything with legislative process. So I would just say to everyone, this is very early in the process, and something like this has a long, long way to go.
Okay.
As I was reading through it, Jason, I was a little bit concerned about it, even some things that. Parks and, and zoo, and things like that, that we actually maintain.
Well, yeah, and I, and I don't, I don't know the tax arrangement with any private zoos, you know, there's one in particular I can think of that. You know, so do they not pay property tax? You know, would. Would every health club not pay? You know, when I discussed this with Tanya, you know, if the, if the city had a food counter that was primarily intended for their employees, but if a citizen walked up, they stole the sandwich. You know, do we now have every restaurant in the city of County not paying proper tax? So, again, I, I think we all know what issue this is directed at solving. But it's, it's a, it's a very, very broad approach to solving that, that issue.
Well, if it gets further along, and we need to get the ball, we need to know early enough we can.
Well, I know, Commissioner, I think we're at that point. I, I think we have to increase communication on this, especially in terms of making it clear to people. This is the practical effect of what this would do. So, yeah, it's, it's time to be having those conversations most, most certainly.
Okay.
I think the other one that you had on the list that you sent me, Tom, was the election bill impacting voter drop boxes. You know, that's, that's become a battle between the former Secretary of State, who's now Attorney General, and the current Secretary of State. That has been something that especially some of the more conservative members of the Kansas Senate have, have kind of had. In, in their targets. And there's, there's been a lot of different legislation in place related to drop boxes in terms of, you know, you can have one. But it's got to be inside the county election office and has to have. but it's got to be inside the county election office and has to have, uh, it has to be monitored by two people of different parties. Uh, and then just as you saw, complete elimination, uh, of the election drop boxes. So. Um, and I, I guess you may or may not be aware, nobody has more drop boxes right now than the county.
Okay. Yep, yeah, Commissioner Hal has a question.
Yeah, um, that Senate Bill two oh eight is, is now officially a mess. I, I testified on that. Um. The base bill said no ballot, no remote ballot boxes, but it did say one ballot box inside the election office. It still called it a remote ballot box. And did require continuously monitored by the incentive on the, well, a senator, I won't tell you who it was, but made a motion to get rid of all remote ballot boxes. It does not refer to the one inside the, the election office as a drop box. It just calls it, it's still, in that bill, still called a remote ballot box. So it's unsure, I think it's unclear now what that bill actually does. It did pass, uh, uh, the gen, general, general orders in the Senate, and then it passed final action yesterday. It's headed to the House, but at the same time, on the House aside, H B twenty fifty three that regulates ballot boxes passed the Kansas House yesterday. So we have conflicting bills House and Senate. And uh, I don't know what, I don't, I really don't know where that leaves us. I'm confused. I'm, I'm really quite confused on Senate Bill two oh eight now.
Any, any other questions? All right, uh, Jason and Jessica, thanks uh, for jumping on real quick and uh have a successful day.
All right, well, we, uh, Mr. Chairman, we do have Jessica on, and I know Commissioner Dennis was asking about the I D B, and so Jessica does have information on that that we can cover with you real quick.
Good.
Yeah. Go ahead. So, um. There are currently about five thousand people on the waitlist. Um, it's estimated that five hundred people can come off of that waitlist for every four million dollars um, allocated. But the real emphasis right now is K Dad's um is seeking a waiver process. This should take about two years to implement. And Representative Will Carpenter has included a proviso in the budget um, for them to continue to pursue this app. So there is some work being done that through the waiver process would also bring more dollars into the system and help address the I D B population. And then the question remains, what if any additional resources will be added? And, you know, the, the budget process is still in progress, but just for you to know five thousand people on the list, four million to remove five hundred of those folks from that list. So that's where things are at. It is going to be a long process. Um, but the hope is that with this proviso, the agency can move forward and start working on this waiver.
I appreciate it. Uh. Did we ever provide Representative Ford Carr with the information that he asked when we were up there?
We can, we can send him an email.
Uh, yeah, but we won't.
Okay, I want to make sure he gets that information. He, he did not know that there was a big waitlist. I D D. Well, I just received an email, uh, yes, it's from Debbie Looper with the son that has some I D D problems. Included on the email were Aussie and August and so forth. There are some serious issues within and send it over to the gentleman, um, so that they can see if there's anything that you can go do to help, but and state funding, if we're going to try and solve this problem.
Yep. I, I'm changing.
Another topic.
Just very.
Are you just stopping?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, changing topics very slightly. You're just, I'm sure you know, Jason, but I want to make sure everybody else knows that Senate Bill two deals with suspended drivers licenses. It got stalled on the judiciary side of the uh, Senate. And uh, it's not dead, but it's certainly not moving forward. I, I think we have some work to do there. But yesterday we had House Bill twenty two sixteen. Um, went up on general orders. I was surprised by it. I didn't, I didn't really know about that bill. I don't know why I didn't know about that bill, but uh, it deals with the mandatory five day jail sentence on first time offender suspended driver's license. As uh, and it removes a five day mandatory uh should say sentence, sentence. And so that, that did pass. I think we have a, we do have a, a, a germane bill. We could, we could work on that potentially as it continues to move back over to the Senate. My, my guess is that'll go back to Senate Transportation. Um, I think we have some work to do either on Senate Bill two or H B twenty two sixteen yet this year, but again, we do have a, a second bill to, to play with now. All right, thank you.
Okay, Jason or Jessica, if you have anything else to add, I think, uh, or Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions? She's on the phone also.
No, I'm good. Just listening. Thank you.
Okay. So anything?
I have a question for Commissioner Hal on the suspended driver's license bill.
Okay, go ahead, Jessica.
Are you thinking that you would like us to work to try and get the content of Senate Bill two put into the House's version?
I, I, I can tell you right now, the issue of Senate Bill twenty two sixteen doesn't really deal with restricted licenses at all. And that's the, that's the, that's the base part of Senate Bill two. So yeah, absolutely, we need to work on that. Um. I have no doubt that there's a, a number of proponents on the bill on the Senate side that would love to see that happen. Um. Again, you know, the Sheriff's Association, Ed Clump testified in favor of this. We had, we had all, we had a, a, a lot of good proponents on the bill. And uh, twenty two sixteen is just, it, it's a, it touches the topic. It doesn't go very far. And I think that to make this bill really usable, uh, we can do some, we have to do some work. And so, yeah, absolutely. I think we need to follow where twenty two sixteen goes on the Senate side. And I would, I would like to work on that committee to get some of the provisions of Senate Bill two amended on in the committee. Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll be glad to testify when it comes up.
Okay, anything else, Jason or Jessica? All right.
No, I don't think so, not at this point.
All right, thanks again for jumping on. Have a good day.
Yep, thank you.
All we have.
Okay, that's all we have. Um, again, I would, thanks for anybody that's watching. I just encourage the, uh, if anybody's got any question, any citizens or anybody watching, have any questions about the backup materials that are on the agenda. Uh, it's online and is able to be reviewed at any time. It's your purview before our Wednesday meeting. So with that, we will, happy Friday, everybody, and we'll see you uh, next week.
It's forty million dollars increase a year.